So welcome, everybody. Good evening. If you're still on your way in, there's some stuff on the table. Come on in and have a seat. I'm going to introduce myself a little bit because most people here don't know me. A few people know me. My name is John Neifert, and I'm going to be your moderator tonight. And for this unique event here, this is an open forum for the city council candidates who are up in front of you here, and it's sponsored by the citizens of Pella to help you in this upcoming election. Just a little bit about me, so you know where I'm coming from. I am from rural Ottley. I'm not a Pella citizen, okay? But this town is important to me. I love this town, and it's Christian heritage. I find myself here a little bit uncomfortable. I am not usually politically active, so this is a little bit new and different for me. But I'm doing this because I have a great concern for our town and protecting and preserving its culture. Above all else, I am about bringing the gospel message to all, that God's people may be drawn to Him to repent and believe. And for those of you who don't know the gospel or say, hey, what do you mean by the gospel? The good news is this. A real quick summary, direct from Scripture, that Christ died for our sins. That implies that we are guilty for all of sin. They've fallen short of the glory of God, and we are objects of God's wrath, and we are in need of His grace. And that He died and was buried. So the wages of sin is death. So this death by Christ is fulfillment of justice. And that is what reconciles us to God, that He was raised on the third day in accordance with the Scriptures. And this tells us that this is a fulfillment of prophecy and a vindication of the life of Christ as the Son of God. We, myself included, cannot make ourselves right with God through what we have done. We can't do it through being good enough. But we can only do it through Christ Himself and what He has done. With that, I want to thank you all for coming here and being here tonight, to the candidates up here, for making themselves available for this open conversation, and for all of you here in the audience as well for being here to listen, be active in the future and direction of our city. I do want to recognize, now as well as the candidates up here, we have some other people in here in the audience. I think we have Calvin as one of the current city council members and Mayor Ward back there. Are there any other council members here that I missed or didn't see? If not, but I just want to recognize them as well. We've got Dr. Bob over here in the corner here, up on the side as well. A little bit about our format tonight. Our time here will be split in half. So we've got 6:00 to 8:30. Roughly half, the first half of this time is going to be kind of prepared questions. Before this event, we reached out, solicited questions from the community. We've got probably a couple dozen or more, so we've kind of taken those and consolidated. We don't have time for thirty questions for everybody tonight in the timeframe we've been given. So we'll use that time for the first half. We'll give you a short stretch break in between, and then the second half of the evening will be open questions. We've got a microphone up here, okay? And those questions can be new topics. They can be follow-up on earlier topics that we covered, and maybe you want to dig in a little bit deeper. But also, I'd like to recognize that we're just a few days away from the election. So, candidates, I encourage you for straightforward speech, okay? Speech which highlights what makes you different than your opponents, right? That's what people want to hear, right? As we come into the election and get ready to vote. Also, the audience, I want to encourage you to bring clear questions that will make a difference in how you vote, okay? Just a few simple ground rules, five of them here. So all candidates will answer all questions, and that also means that don't ask a question that's to one person individually. So these questions are for everybody. Also, no personal questions or personal attacks in this. Second, we have, for you guys as participants, come to the microphone, stand in line if there's someone ahead of you. But if you want to ask a question, come to the microphone and be ready to do that. Each question, I will indicate who to start here unless someone has, we've talked through some of that stuff, and then we'll move either left or right through each of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond unless otherwise indicated. So we have some variation in there as well, but we will then also have timer. So Anita is here up front, providing timing. So if we have a two-minute answer, thirty seconds before that, she will hold up the yellow card just to say, okay, wrap it up, right? And then the red card when we hit that timeline, okay? And likewise, questions from you guys as the audience, we'll try and keep those to two minutes as well. Try and be clear, concise, get to the point, get to the question, you know, so on from there. Our first one, we have a very short timeline, ten seconds each, and we're going to go from left to right. We'll have each candidate introduce themselves, their name, and the position they're in, the seat they're running for. So begin with you, Anita.
I am Mark Dion, the current incumbent of a council at large position.
I'm Bruce Skibout. I'm pursuing my sixth term for the third ward.
I'm Robin Paul Scrapp. Is this right?
The button. If it's flashing, then press it.
It's flashing. Press it. I'm Robin Paul Scrapp, and I'm running for the at-large seat.
Lynn Branderhorst, running for reelection, Ward 1.
Tony Boxhoven, running for the at-large seat.
Alan Bodenauer, also running for the at-large.
All right, Alan, keep that because we're going to go the other way, right, with the next question. We'll go a little bit deeper than your name and seat now, but as a way of introducing yourself as a candidate, please tell us what are your top two items or issues that you feel passionate about and that you would seek to raise or resolve in your first ninety days if you were elected?
Can you repeat just the last part of that?
Two items or issues you feel passionate about that you could seek to raise in the first ninety days if you were elected?
Oh, man, that's, I think the big things for me is, as we continue to see in this, in our community, is we see the need for workforce. So that, to me, is workforce and trying to get infrastructure stuff. So those are things, to me, that can't wait. Those need to be addressed from day one, as far as, I know it's going to take time to obviously get there. You can't solve a workforce issue in ninety days, but what does it look like to actually take some of those steps to addressing those and the infrastructure downtown and around town as well?
So in the first ninety days, it's tough to get anything done on council in ninety days, first of all. But I think it's really important that one of the first priorities would need to be to understand and get a focus back on what are priorities and potentially reshuffle the deck, because I believe that one of the concerns that I've heard around town is that there's lots of question on the priority in which things are being done and accomplished in town. So I think a good understanding of what that is and a conversation around what is a reshuffle of priorities look like and the tale. The other thing, I think, is there's some other big projects, the fiber project, getting that done, making sure that that gets completed because of the impact that has on industry as well as community and folks that want to work from home. So first ninety days, those two things, just understanding where both of those projects sit and making sure that the alignment is correct.
I would, in the first ninety days, continue to look at different ways for affordable housing, look at and see what is truly affordable housing, taking the median income in our community, and looking at how we can be creative about that, perhaps in the form of grants, perhaps in the form of purchasing some of our older homes and refurbishing them, giving homeowners grants from our TIF funding, which is totally permissible to do, already checked into it, and then our infrastructure, our sewers, our roads, our water. We have to make sure that we are staying ahead of these projects so we can keep our people safe and traveling.
Lynn hit my hot button, my hot button. When it comes to affordable housing, I'm passionate about affordable housing. I do affordable housing for a living, and I really think there's some good options out there. Like Lynn, I know there's some grant money available. I know there's money that is available that could go to the homeowners to help offset costs. So I'm very passionate about that, and I would certainly be happy to have people listen to what I have discovered. The other thing that I think we need to address is listening to the voters again. I think we've gotten kind of sidestepped from the priority that we represent you on the council, and that needs to be refocused back to the people in Pella.
I think number one thing for anybody that serves as citizens, no matter the town, state, or the nation, is fiduciary responsibilities. It's your money that we're dealing with, and I think it's important that we get feedback and that we, from the citizens, and so respond as directed, really. That's number one. I'm really caught between two other ones. Also, infrastructure. I think that is an important thing that the city needs to address, is its duty to maintain infrastructure for its citizens, to provide air transportation for corporations and for its citizens. And also, I'm going to throw this in, I really think it's important that we maintain our historical perspective and lifestyle and conservative values in this community.
Yes, as far as the near-term future, those boats are already in the water. One thing, of course, mentioned a little bit ago, the fiber optic system. That has been much delayed between COVID, material shortages, finding technicians to actually hook up your homes. We've got to be wrapping that up. And the other thing is, there's an effort underway to do due diligence on a community center, whether that be upgrading what we have already or looking at an option of something new. But when it comes to a community center, we can do much better than what we have today.
All right, thank you. And Mark, I'm going to go to you with this first question. We'll give three minutes for this one, so, and it kind of goes a little bit deeper into what several of you have mentioned here as well. There are several high-dollar, high-profile projects under consideration here within the city with the city council, things like the airport, the rec center, fiber, you know, community center and others. Given limited funding, how would you order or prioritize these efforts? You know, what needs to go first, right? All those type of things. How and when should the city take on public debt or raise taxes for projects like this? Would you pursue TIF money? How does your prioritization change if it's fully or partially citizen-funded, right? So a whole bunch of different things all kind of piled into there. I know each of you can't address every single thing in there, but that kind of frames up the conversation around all these different things, and how would you prioritize those?
Like I just said, there's a couple things already underway. Interestingly enough, it's been at least ten years ago I chaired a committee of citizens to look at community center building. We didn't have a lot of information to work with at that time. Consensus was that we needed to fix it up, and here we are, all that many years later, still looking at the same issue. Like I said just a moment ago, we could do much better for our citizens as a community center. When we're looking at investing, well, ten million dollars would be the city's share of renovation. We are obligated to do due diligence. You would not expect any less, but really anxious to see that come to a conclusion. Behind that, we're in a sweet spot right now. Our parking spots are full, our stores are occupied, our businesses are prospering, and we have to do all we can to keep that going on, because that's not a given. We are in a fierce competition, not only with small communities, but with the Des Moines metro area. And I think the next logical step for this community is a real deal recreation center, our sports park, a remarkable thing that we can really take no credit for. A group called Fields of Our Future was the engine behind that, a very visionary, energetic group. And I recently found out that from the very beginning, they envisioned a recreation center out there. I mean, these were visionary people. And as far as funding goes, I think we're getting the horse way out ahead of the cart, because we do not know at this point in time what the city's share of any of these projects will end up to be. There's already been fundraising going on in regards to the community center. There's fundraising going on in regards to a rec center, and it really boils down to what is going to be the city's share in mega projects like this. And then, how are we going to fund that? We have not raised property taxes. That would be the city in twenty years. The Assessor has, we haven't. I would not like to raise property taxes. I would rather go to bonding, but if necessary, I would be willing to do that.
I think, first off, I would like to clarify something that you said, John. I think you talked about doing a TIF for public projects, and that really is not feasible. It's a private and public joint effort when you have a TIF. That being said, I do think that we have a lot going for this community. I think when you have two large billion-dollar corporations that have assisted us for decades, you cannot stress that enough. Also, I think that we oftentimes put too much emphasis on growth rather than maintaining what we have. I think, I think of the tale of two cities, St. Paul, Minneapolis. If you ever go to Boe, St. Paul has restored everything. They don't put up new buildings. Minneapolis tears them all down and builds up new. What one likes is a personal preference. Quite frankly, I think a combination of both. I would love to see that community center stay in the service of the citizens in however it would serve. And I think that can be determined yet. Does it have the capacity to provide everything that the citizens need? No, but I think it could certainly do a great job of fulfilling some of the interests of the community. Fiduciary responsibility, I don't take lightly. And I've heard quite frequently that now is a great time to borrow money, and it is, but it all has to be paid back. And I would really like to see us take a patient approach to how we spend the citizens' money. So if we come to that point, we're not strapped, we're not bonded to our capacity. So I just, I think that as a council, we need to hold that foremost in front of us.
No button, they're telling me no button. You know, with this question, I feel like I'm kind of the bridge in between the first two responses. I am a firm believer, where we have made promises, we need to keep those promises, and that needs to become our priority. Which of the things listed, I think the community center is the longest outstanding promise that we have made and that has not yet been kept. If you are here tonight and have not seen the plan, I believe there's brochures back there that show the plan. It is another project that is well thought out and would be wonderfully beneficial to this community. I, too, don't think we should irresponsibly spend money. I think every project that was listed is a good project if we can afford it and if it's sensible. I know right now that Pella is one of the lowest in the state of Iowa for city tax levy. We're at $10.20, and I know that Knoxville is over $20. But I also will always say, our property assesses for far higher than other properties. So to say, well, if Knoxville's $20, we can go up to $20 per thousand, that does not make sense, because ours, our property values are higher. It's going to cost more money. So I think when those decisions are made, we need to look at the whole picture, not just what capacity we have to charge the taxpayers of Pella. These are expensive projects and in space per household, and our population is not great. I do want to say, too, that I am for growth, that I am for sensible growth. You can overgrow a community. You can grow a community too fast. So I think every decision that's made needs to be made in a responsible way, or we take into effect, or how this will affect every member of this community. That means community members that are barely making it and community members that are well able to pay this, but all of them deserve equal consideration.
I'm kind of a student of Daryl Dobrinaker. He is the reason I'm here. And one of the first things he taught me about being elected to public office was, in his words, kid, always know where you're going, hold on to the throttle, but most of all, know how you're going to get there. And translated, that means have a direction for the city, be strong for that vision, but make sure you can afford it. My first priority every day for this city is to make sure you're safe, to make sure our police, our fire, and our ambulance is well-funded and well-staffed, to make sure that when you turn on the water, your water is clean. Sadly, to make sure when you do a load of laundry or you flush the stool, that the water goes down and it doesn't come back up. Those are priorities to me. Every time it rains, I know there are people in Ward 1 whose sewer system is coming up and down. That's a big deal to me. That's a huge deal. All day I've worried, all day I've wondered, is the sewage going down? And that's a crazy thing to have to think about in Ward 1, but we do. So that's a priority to me. I have to make sure that all of those things work before I look at the next thing. So until we go there and until we can ensure some of those things, I'm not going to be the first one in line to say, we need something new and bright and shiny. I've always been a point to the health and the safety of our community is what is utmost to me. Fiduciary responsibility, if you know me, you know that's me. I need to know how we're going to get there. So first and foremost, I want to keep you safe. Secondly, I want to keep the community affordable to live in. And third, yes, let's sensibly grow this community, but know where we're going while we're taking the throttle.
So when I think about how to spend your money, I think one thing's very fundamental, and that's nobody should spend your money better than you. And so when we think about priorities and projects in town, to me, the first thing should always be utilities, as Lynn and other folks have mentioned, water and sewer. Now, there's, beyond the residents in town, there's a couple places downtown that during tool-time when they bring on extra staff, have to bring in portable toilets, not because of the inflow of customers coming in, but because their sewer can't handle them. So let me say that again, their sewer can't handle it. And so the fact that we aren't doing something about that disturbs me. We talk a lot about, you know, taking care of businesses and making sure our storefronts stay full. To me, that's how the city should participate in making sure those things happen. As Robin mentioned, promises are promises, and that community center has to get done. We've talked about it until we're blue in the face, and it keeps getting shuffled down for other fun and neat and cool things, and I just don't think that's right. When someone tells me they're going to do something, I expect them to do it. So I think that's what we owe the community, is to not tell you what you want to hear, but to tell you the truth and then act on it. As far as taking on debt or increasing taxes, you know, we're very fortunate to not have had our tax rate increased in a long time, twenty-some years, as Louie Mark said. And when we're going to take on projects that jeopardize increasing your taxes, again, that should come from you. So that should be a public vote. We should be soliciting your input. We should be taking your guidance and then acting on what that is, not making that decision for you because we think that the community needs something big and flashy and new. That is your decision, and so we need to respect that. As far as, I think, one of the bullet points was whether it was citizen-funded. You know, to me, things that are citizen-funded are fantastic. Those things can run in conjunction with projects that we owe the community. So keeping you safe, keeping your water clean, keeping your lights on and affordable. I think it's important that we not be ashamed of who we are as a small community who's proud of their heritage. And so we need to continue to protect that, we need to respect that, and in doing that, we'll afford those folks that are living on single incomes to continue to be able to afford to live here. If it's all about building new shiny stuff and borrowing money, then it becomes more difficult for those folks to be able to afford to live here. So I think it's really important that we keep those things in the forefront of our mind. And then, again, you know, there are some very cool things that we have to focus on to keep our community unique, and I think those should be at the top of the priority list.
For me, the big things are always going to be safety and health. So for me, the infrastructure thing needs to get addressed soon. And then, I think you move on from there, making the decision at least on what is happening with the community center. Again, weighing all the options, for me, it's what does our city need? So if that building fits what the city needs, let's go after a big renovation of it and to do the thing. If it doesn't actually meet what it needs, well, what else can we do? I don't want to see it torn down. I don't want to see that piece go away. But then, to me, it is seeing the indoor rec center. I would love to see this thing go up. You know, we can talk scale, we can talk the funding, once we actually see some of these numbers that are coming out. You know, I think we're so quick to just throw it by the wayside, and I think that's also not a wise decision either. For me, I don't, I don't want to raise, who wants to raise taxes? I mean, that just seems like not a smart thing to do at all, especially out of the last year and a half that we've had. And so I do not want to see taxes being raised for these projects, but I also, I think we need to start looking at some of these things as investments, even for the future, instead of just being sticker-shocked on some of these projects. You know, that's what has happened with some of the streetscape stuff in the past. We look and we're like, oh, this is a lot of money, and we've waited on infrastructure and those kinds of things. And we've waited on infrastructure and those kinds of things because, because of some of the sticker shock, I'm assuming. I guess I don't know that 100%, but we've had those things from what I've learned. And so to me though, it always will come down to health and safety of our citizens and of everyone here.
Thank you. We're going to go to you next, Lynn. You're going to start this one.
All right.
We touched on it, we'll go a little bit deeper here too. So the next question will have three minutes. Earlier this summer, there was an incident at the, a public nudity at the Pella Aquatic Center, which received national attention and caused many ripple effects, including activists from out of town, refunding if season passes, resignation of pool employees. Parents, many parents and grandparents naturally responded to protect their children because you always protect those that you love. Would you support a standard operating procedure for responding to these type of events or a public nudity ordinance or, you know, as many other cities across the nation have done? Or how would you address keeping our city facilities and public spaces a safe place for our families and children?
Okay. Yes, I'd be happy to talk about that person. I was changed the day that I heard about that incident. And I was changed by the fact that I always liked to look at what happened, why did it happen? And what, how do we look at this systemically? And to me, when I sat and I looked at what happened, I, I do not believe that this is a gay, lesbian or transgender issue. This is a nudity issue. And so, being the daughter of a college dean and a kindergarten teacher, I did my research. I have studied the nudity policies in all 50 states. And I found that there are only three states of the 50 that have any type of policy that addresses nudity of the top. Now I'm not going to go on and tell you how lax they are because I don't want to get into that. But this is taking research and study and it isn't a knee jerk reaction. I believe that it is totally within our grasp to be able to write a nudity policy, not only for our community, but for our state. And I'm not the only one, because I've had a lot of civic leaders, I've had mayors from other communities come and speak with me about this issue. They've told me how they've handled it in their community. And I think it's public knowledge that that evening, I was very proud to be able to stand up and speak out about it. It isn't something we should wash our hands of. It's something we need to address and it can be addressed logically. Believe me, I'm a long time studying it. It is a problem throughout the entirety of our country. And again, these are the issues that are important. These are the issues that aren't in budget. These are the issues that really cost you time and effort and thoughtful concentration. And I believe that it's the type of thing that we need to have community members also give input on. So I think I addressed that. Go make a left or right.
Go right, you're right.
I don't want to repeat a lot of what Lynn says, but I will say I echo a lot of what Lynn says. You know, as a mother of eight children and 34 foster children, if you don't think this issue came up in my home at many points through a 10-year period, that would be wrong because it has. And still does to this day. I do agree that it's a nudity issue. With this issue, I think Lynn addressed exactly what I would say and how I would support it. But I do, on a personal note, want to say the thing about this issue and the meeting after meeting at city council that I was there, that hurt me the most, was that there was a lot of attack about this, I'm going to say child, because she's still a student, and her and her character. And I would say that I was distressed about that. The issue and the student are different. And so I would hope that if this ever comes again, and I hope that we don't have to, but if this issue ever comes again, that we respect that person for who God made her to be.
I could echo a lot of what Lynn said. I do think that it is a nudity issue and resolution to it. I think there is indeed things that the city could put in place that will, we can be more restrictive than what the state allows, not less than what the state allows. The key word there is the state. And I think that that is exactly what we need to do as citizens of this community, as citizens of this state. We need to get ahold of our senators, get ahold of our legislators and work at changing this. Lynn told me that there was only three other states where, I was astounded. California has ordinances, the state of California has ordinances against, I'm going to call it what it is, topless people. We're more conservative than that, we're better than that. And I think that's what we need to proceed. I think as a city, and I have talked to different, other different communities, their policy that they have, I think we can write something that will protect all people, that they're not embarrassed, that they're not alarmed, that they're not hurt by what other people wear or don't wear.
I'm a little confused. From all I have heard and understand, what we had at the water park was an individual in unconventional dress. So I come with the question, in this room, people who apparently are very invested in this, what is your working definition of nudity? I really need clarification on that. Would someone please venture?
Not clothed. That's a start.
Okay, thank you. As Bruce just mentioned, that would be without clothing. Gotcha. Anyone else want to add to that?
I would think that if you don't know, if you don't know what nudity is, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too, that doesn't fly with me. Anyone else want to try?
Well, you go over to Europe and bare breasts are all over on the beach. Our standards are just a little different.
I follow you totally. I am still confused as to what a day-to-day working definition of nudity ought to be. That being said, I have a question, issue. Given today's political climate, we cannot get together on something like wearing a mask. With our hospitals stuffed full of COVID patients, we cannot get together on whether or not we shall be vaccinated. What makes us think that the public is going to stand for some kind of a standard of people telling me, others, what's modesty, how you have to dress? I don't want bare breasts at our water park, absolutely not. But there's a whole big gray area in between and I can't quite wrap my arms around it. I think there would be huge pushback to trying to dictate to people what is adequately modest.
Why are you having a hard time with that? If she had bare breasts, that's nudity.
Yeah, but the individual at the water park did not.
True.
No, that individual was wearing a restraint, a band around the breasts.
I heard she just had tape.
That there were two different incidents, but let's clarify that. Yeah, there was this, this young person and then a few days later, a couple showed up. Attention-getting things about all.
So you think that's okay?
No, that second thing, I would totally agree with you.
Well, just to be clear, half the, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of necessarily having females with bare breasts in the pool. But all of our males are at the pool with bare breasts and that's only been acceptable in the last 50, 60 years in this country. Every day we have young women at the pool with much of their breasts hanging out, wearing very spiffy bikinis. And so, I mean, the line, if we had a young person here who identifies as male, who was completely covered with a band, it's hard to understand that as nudity.
All right, guys, let's move on. His time is up, so let's move over to Alan. Those follow-up questions can come later.
Appreciate that. Let's, again, I think, I think the thing to remember is, as was kind of stated, that we have to abide by the law of the land. And I agree with Bruce, if we don't like what is happening, we need to, we collectively need to be, to be writing our legislatures and to actually, if you want to see change, we all need to be a part of that. The hard thing for me is the divisive, that this has become such a divisive issue. And for me, I want, I want to be a person who, who can bring healing to all sides of this. And I think this is a, this is a huge learning experience for our city, you know, whether that means that we, we are addressing a nudity policy, whatever that looks like. I don't like the fact that we can say, or that if there's an issue, that there's nothing we can do about it, until there is truly nothing that we can do about it. And again, part of the learning experiences is that we have to be proactive and not reactive. Because I think a lot of the divisive nature of this has become, or has come from the fact that we've reacted to something that, that, that I, again, I think we should be able to learn from and start thinking ahead on some of these things. The reality is, is a lot of these issues start on the coast and they work in towards the center of the country. And so we see what is happening and to me, I think we need to continue to be proactive in these situations to keep Pella a safe place, but also to, we got, we got, we have to remember that, that people have constitutional rights as well. And so I don't ever want to step on people's constitutional rights because that is just, that is just wrong, in my opinion. So again, we, there's, there's a lot of discussion, I'm sure, to still be had on all of this, but want to see, we want to see these things be addressed.
So a lot of what I was going to say has been said, but you know, as it relates to a standard operating procedure, which was part of your initial question, I think we've failed as a community to not have one in place because what we've done is, we've put 17-year-olds that are supposed to be running the swimming pool in positions that they have to be administrators of policies that are very unclear. So it's time that we're bold as a community. We have the ability to set policy for how you use our swimming pool. So we need to do that. And like Lynn, I've spent more time than I would have ever guessed reading about nudity policies. And Iowa State University makes it very clear what nudity is to them. The city of Fort Dodge has a very well-spelled-out indecent exposure policy. So I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. We have to come up with something that addresses a nudity issue and we have to come up with something that is accommodating for everybody in this community. Because at the end of the day, we want to be welcoming to everyone and we want to make sure that the resources we have in place are used by everyone. We just have to set the rules in place that are fair to everyone. And so I think that's the opportunity. We don't have to come out with some revolutionary rule on what is nudity and what isn't nudity. I have, over the last couple of weeks, three, four weeks, spent some time talking with one of our state representatives about how nudity is addressed in the state of Iowa, or better, how it's not addressed in the state of Iowa. And you know, it's going to take a community like ours that has wisdom and strength in numbers to be bold and to come up with a policy that other communities can also follow because they want it. There's other communities struggling with the same thing. And so this is our chance to be a leader and we can, we can set a precedence and we can set something in place that isn't discriminatory toward someone that makes our pool welcoming, but yet protects our kindergartners, our preschool kids and those things. Because at the end of the day, that's the issue, right? We don't want preschoolers and little kids seeing some of those things and I understand that. So the groundwork is there and together, I know Lynn has worked on stuff, Bruce has been talking with folks. Post-election, if this community allows me the opportunity to serve again, we will have a proposal on the table in the spring before the swimming season starts. And you have my commitment for that tonight and we'll present it to the council and we'll present it to the community and we'll expect feedback from you because this isn't going to happen in a vacuum. And we want you to be vested in it just as much as we are.
All right, thank you. Bruce, we'll go to you next, start and then we'll go to my right, your left. Okay. The third question here, in terms of growing and developing the city of Pella, it is an interconnected mix of individual citizens, businesses, and they all have diverse needs, including housing, jobs, events, amenities, all sorts of different things, right? How would you keep a pulse on the needs and the interests of these diverse groups and how much influence should each of them have in the agenda or direction of the city council? And then just kind of maybe an overarching question there, what is it that you believe an individual needs to grow their family and career here in Pella? Quite diverse, so, I'm sorry.
Three minutes.
John, do you think you could break that down into a couple of different questions?
I think it probably was several questions in terms of one. I'll give it a shot. I think there's a partnership between lifestyle and amenities in a community, between business and, and the city, the community itself. I'm going to get a little bit specific here, maybe. I look at TIF, Tax Increment Finance. Great tool that was given to the municipalities in the state of Iowa by the state of Iowa. It allows, certainly does allow and promote growth. But I think the basis of TIF is to have citizen participation in areas that this development probably would not have happened. I think, one that comes to my mind is the Boseland area. You know, I'm not so sure that that really would have developed and gotten on tax payrolls and been a huge support of the community by its taxes if it had not been for TIF. So I think those are tools that we as councils have access to. That being said, we also have to be very careful that we do not overuse TIF. If you understand TIF, TIF takes the growth in a development and puts it in a separate pot, I'm going to say. And the standard of that, the basis of that property continues to go to the, to the city. Well, if you get too much TIF, that basis does not grow, the service to the community does, and it can be very difficult to maintain services, staffing, et cetera, because you do not have the growth in the general fund. I know the people in that area are paying those taxes. I know the people in that area are paying those taxes, but it's not going to the general fund. And that's what keeps the utilities going, that's what keeps the sewer water, et cetera. Um, oh, I, I just, uh, think that as a council, we need to... Red flag is come up.
That's a big question.
Do you want to go this way?
Yes.
Um, a lot of questions, well, I'll address some of that. Um, all the entertainment and facilities can be fantastic, but if there's not people that are able to afford to live and work here, it will do not a lot of good. And so, um, I, I've mentioned before that I serve on a board for Iowa Workforce Development, and we are working very hard to figure out how the workforce can get here. We're working on a transportation issue where people that don't live here could even come in on a bus or some kind of a carpool or something to, to work here. With the jobs here, I still say, like I've said so many times, we need affordable housing so that a young or a moderate-income family can afford to live here. We know that our kids move away and they come back, and we want them to come back, and we want them to be able to afford to live here. And I think as we grow our housing, we, we make accommodations so the jobs are here. We need to make accommodation to get people to those jobs. The other things come, the entertainment comes, the tax base increases. Um, and to make all those things possible, we all need to work together. And everybody needs to have some input to make it work.
Rob and I probably shouldn't sit next to each other because we are both such big believers in affordable housing. You can't make people live here if they can't afford to live here. Growth, we need affordable housing. We do, you can't force people to live here if they can't afford to live here. So I'm all, I'm all for growth. I'm all for growth for everyone. I'm for growth of the, um, executive, but I'm also pushing for growth for the people that come into our community and every day make the widgets in our factories that make our community possible. We have to let people have housing that they can afford. We have to let them have housing that they can build up equity in. We have to let them be a part of the neighborhood. Because if they're part of the neighborhood, they're gonna talk to other people, and then the growth and the potential will continue on and on and on. One of the really great things about running for office, you find yourself having conversations with people that you normally would not have sat across the table with. Well, this summer, I sat across a picnic table with a bunch of moms, and it was one of the best mornings that I have had in my life. And we talked as their children played in the park. And I asked them, "Why are you here? Why are you here? What brought you here? Is, is it a restaurant? Is it, you know, some, some sort of ice skating or roller, roller skating place?" No. The number-one answer was the quality of life. It was a great place for them to raise their children. It was the parks, it was the community atmosphere, it was the fact that their children could ride their bikes without worry. It was the fact that we could all sit around a picnic table on a very hot office day and feel completely safe. That's what I think families want. I think they want great schools, and we have them. We have so many options. I think they want to be here for our heritage. They want to take part in the culture. They want to be in the tulip-time parade. They want to go to Yarsma Bakery and Vanderplu Bakery. They want to eat pop veggies. It's a lifestyle that you can't buy. You feel it. It's inside here. That's what I believe families want. I believe that's why people move here. I've talked to retired people, "Why are you moving here?" I love the feel, "Oh, I have the red light." So, pass it on to Tony.
And, and not to keep kicking the affordable housing thing, um, but, but it is very important. And one of the things that's been made loud and clear to me is, um, there are a lot of single-income families in this town. And we have to, as a community, make sure that not only are we making it affordable for, uh, young adults to start their family here, but we have to make sure that, um, all adults can, can afford to live here. I don't want them having to make a decision whether they can buy their prescription medicine or eat. And, and that's happening in this community. And so we have to be very conscious of that. Um, a- as far as, um, the careers and those kind of things here, I was thinking the other night about, when I was on the council the last time, some of the projects that we worked on under Mayor Mueller that, that really drove some of those things, and, and that kicking off the, the Pella Fiber Project and, um, launching the, uh, the Prairie Ridge Development and what that was, you know, the affordable housing that that was supposed to be. And so there's some very cool things that have happened already that, that we have to just make sure don't get spun out of control and become unaffordable. Um, you know, the, the Fiber to the Home piece, um, i- is such a cool project that we've all learned during COVID that we can work pretty effectively from home. And so, uh, for our bigger employers in town is, is, the talent pool is tough, right? Less than two percent unemployment in Marion County. It's hard to find engineers, it's hard to find, um, people of that, that knowledge level. They, they can now go outside, and they can attract people to their companies that, that may want to live here someday. So that's a great tool for them to use as a marketing opportunity to get, you know, families here. And, uh, the day, I know the day Lynn's talking about in, in the park, um, you, you don't have to sit there very long and watch eight or nine kids running all over the park and, and glance over at their parents and see the calm look in their face to know that we live in a really cool town. We live in a town that you don't have to worry about your kids running around the park and somebody coming up and snatching them up. You don't have to worry about them riding their bike to the, to the baseball, baseball field. So, so that's really cool. And, and as I've talked to a lot of folks, um, you know, the, the largest age group in our town is thirty to forty-five years old. And when you ask those folks, "Why do you live, uh, why'd you come here?", because not all of them grew up here. Um, they come here because, well, the schools are just fantastic. You know, that they can play sports, they, great church, we go to a great church. It, it's those kind of things that make Pella special. And, and I don't think if, if we lose sight of that, we'll, we'll be like a lot of other towns that, that are dying on the vine. And we don't want that. As Mark mentioned earlier, our downtown is very, very busy, and that's a great thing for the livelihood of this community. And so we need to protect that. We need to continue to encourage local builders to have opportunities to build affordable homes in this town so that those dollars stay in this community.
Uh, for, for me, I think, uh, the, the growth needs to happen. Um, I think I stated that earlier. Uh, I think that we need to do it in a smart, smart way. You know, I don't think we can't afford to have, uh, like our, our infrastructure and things are not built to have four thousand people in the next five years. So that's, that to me is not smart growth. Um, but what would it look like to add the two thousand families that we, we need workers here in Pella over the next ten years? You know, I think, I think that is a, a much more reasonable, um, uh, goal, to do it in a smart financial, financially safe way. Um, but also, I think, I think what, I, I think you had mentioned something about local businesses. Those are, those are really also the heartbeat of, of what makes Pella unique. Um, I think Mark said it earlier, that all of our stores have businesses, all of our storefronts have businesses in it. And, you know, I think that's becoming less and less popular as you travel around the state. I see places all, all over that have business fronts that are empty. And so, uh, to, to be able to keep businesses, and as, as we talk about infrastructure deals, uh, going on in our, in our business district, especially of town, um, what, you know, I have, I have some ideas of how, how do we keep, um, businesses open during that? Because if you shut down a whole street, those, and we all know that projects take a while, um, a- around here, and so, uh, that, businesses can't afford to have months and months of shutdown. And so, um, you know, I, I have some ideas tossed around, so, uh, if anyone wants to hear them later, uh, you can, uh, get, you can come up and talk to me about that. But I, again, I, I have friends and, and family that have businesses in that, and I understand that those, uh, are, are also vitally important to the, to the health of our, our, uh, community. Um, and as far as affordable housing, uh, I mean, again, I am a, a, a young man that has a single income. Uh, I, I understand probably, well, maybe not more than Robyn, since that is, again, her job, but I understand affordable housing. Um, and I, and I think i- it's hard to, to, uh, I have so, so many ideas as well, um, for that, whether that's, uh, through looking at tax abatements, whether it's, um, looking at more, uh, apartment-style complexes, whether that's, uh, grant money, whatever that looks like. Uh, but I, I think that is also a crucial part in, in the continuing growth of our, of our city.
Mark?
Would you repeat what we're supposed to be addressing?
You want us to be on time?
I, I've lost the thought.
Okay, so the overarching question is, what do you believe an individual needs to grow their family and career in Pella, right? Some of the other background there was really, um, you know, individuals, uh, individual citizens, business needs, lots of different, diverse, um, interests and, and needs there. Um, how do you keep a pulse on the interests, and how should those people, uh, influence the agenda of the council? Still hard.
Yeah, still hard. We're all very concerned about that, uh, that young family where we have one or two breadwinners and we have youngsters in school. I think we need to look at the whole demographic if, if we're gonna have a good social fabric here. Because we also see lots of grandparents coming to Pella because this is where their grandkids are. Parents are here because of the good schools. And, uh, it behooves us to offer something for everybody to support our schools. Let's get out and vote next Tuesday on the school issues. Good places for people to work and earn a decent living. Um, I get, I get flummoxed with this, this term of affordable housing. I, I don't know what that means. It means different things to different people. But, um, we also have to take care of our seniors. Little things. I see in the, uh, rendering of proposed rec center, a walking track. It's just amazing, all the people you see walking around Pella, young and old. And we have people walking every place they can find when the weather goes bad. Third Church, Walmart, you name it. Um, that, to me, that would be one of the greatest amenities of something like that. We, we have to address the whole demographic if we want a good social fabric.
All right, thank you. Um, just, several of you mentioned, uh, you know, what attracts people to Pella and, and so on. Just, uh, my background, um, I've lived in seven different states and twenty-five different homes. I love it here. So, we're gonna take a short break for, um, between this and, and the second half, so stand up, say hi to your neighbor, grab a water, and then be back in your seat in sixty seconds. Yeah, I have a, when I'm here, I'm gonna have a quick switch. Yeah, really, 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 yeah. Okay. I think we'll be, we'll be suited here. Um, who is up for the first question? Anybody wanna, um, go with their first question?
I have a very good, you know, the...
I can't remember. Do you want, do you want a last question? You want the first question?
This is a video.
Okay. Here we go. We got our first question. Say your name, and we'll get to the question, and, uh, we'll have Tony start this time.
Scott DePinning? Scott DePinning? Uh, of all the development that's going on in Pella, uh, has anybody looked at and done any estimates of what the near, near immediate impact is gonna be on our school systems and the impact of Pella currently?
So, that's a very popular question, um, especially after I had some time with the superintendent. Um, you know, the, the school bond thing that's coming up is gonna add ten classrooms, and you might ask, really, are there enough kids for that? And then you find out that they're combining fourth, fifth, and sixth graders in the same classrooms because they don't have enough space. So, so that's one issue. Um, then you think about the new homes that are going up, like out at Prairie, I don't know, there's probably a hundred and some houses out there already. So if, if there's one and a half kids per house, right, you got a hundred and fifty-some kids, and, and then you think about where are they gonna go to school? Um, so there is a huge opportunity in our community, um, to reinvest in our school systems. And so, it, when you think about, I think one of the questions earlier was, when do you take on public debt? That might be something to consider because as we continue to grow, and if we do get, um, two, three hundred more people every year for the next five years to come to our community, we gotta have places for their kids to go to school. On top of that, then you have, uh, you have parking issues, you have all these other things going on. So, um, I, I think the, the study that happened at the school with the current plan they have in place is absolutely necessary. I wonder how long that's going to, to serve us well, right? Because I'm not so sure that, that it's big enough. Um, so I think as a, as a city government, we need to be working very closely with the school system, uh, both schools, because it's a problem for both schools, um, and, and understand how we can participate with them and support them as they continue to
I was, um, I also met with a, a lot of the, um, school board officials and had some really, um, interesting conversations about growth and fluency in the school. And one of the things that I did not realize is that there are not only Pella residents in our school systems that were having trouble, um, keeping these kids all together and having them be able to go through the school system together, is we also have a lot of people that drive into our community that their children also attend our schools. So it is a problem, and they are growing. And it isn't just, to your point, Scott, which was a very good one, it isn't just the people living in these developments. We also have people that work in our industry that bring their children with them as well. So, you know, we need to be looking at that, just like we look at infrastructure or anything that is a fundamental piece of our community. If we, we have a problem, we are growing, I, what was the increase that night that he told us?
I've slept since then.
Okay. Well, I don't know. The school system is trying to stay ahead of it. They really, really are. And, um, also to the point where this bond issue, uh, also includes the, a daycare and a pre-kindergarten because they see that as a problem as well. So they're looking at this influx of students from three years old to the release from high school.
Well, we've had our opportunity to have our kids in quite a few school districts as they've grown. And by far, I say Pella is the best. We are so privileged to have our kids. Our last one's a senior this year, and then we will be out of the school district. But I think when Pella does something in their schools, they do it so well. It's not just good, it's excellent. And so I think that, and as I have friends that are teachers, um, I, I think they're making accommodations already that most of us don't know. Um, they have children in their classrooms that don't speak English, and yet they accommodate them. Um, so I, I agree with Tony in the fact that we should support our schools. It's, if it's bond issues, we need to support those bond issues. Um, but what they do, they do well. And I would continue to say, we owe it to our school system, we owe it to our students, we owe it to our parents and our community to continue...
we owe it to our parents and our community to continue to support them. The impact on the schools sometimes is painful. And we've been in districts that have grown really fast where they brought in those mobile units. That is not optimal. And I do not see that in Pella's future. But Pella, Pella's very, very good, and I'm very proud of that district.
Very good question, Scott. I think oftentimes when I talk to people that are interested or new people that have moved to town, I hear a lot about the education in our community, vitally important. That's whether it's community school, Christian schools, or for that matter, homeschools. I'm very pleased, some of my kids homeschool. And I think our community school does a phenomenal job of unfolding the homeschool kids also, where they are given an opportunity to participate in certain classes or extracurricular activities. And I would, kudos to them. One other thing that I was not aware of, talking to Mr. Everly the other night, was that there's a lot of people, and I, either Tony or Lynn touched on it a little bit, there's a lot of people that come, live out of our school district, go to work at the Vermeer, Pellcarp, or PPI, or any other business. They bring their kids and they go to school. And if they're like working a half-day, or, excuse me, if it's kindergarten, we only have a half-day, they will provide a latch key so that after the parents are finished with work, they can pick those kids up. What a great program. And, you know, I'm all supportive. And I think we need to continue to maintain our education system in this community.
This is kind of repeat and repeat. We have a system we can all be very proud of, I think. And there's some exciting new things that have just happened. There's a big new daycare facility that's about to open up for infants to 2-year-olds. The school system is doing a preschool, which all studies indicate is a huge factor in kids being on a level playing field when they hit kindergarten and right up through high school. And I would even include central. There's another real asset to our community. It's just a atmosphere of quality education we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Scott, for the question. I think the thing that we do have to remember is the more housing that we do bring in, not only provides the more workers for, again, the Pellcarp, the Vermeer, the Layley, the PPI, you name it, all the small businesses. All of these things are vastly important, but it does bring more students. So back when I graduated, thankfully, I did graduate from Pella High, and I'm fortunate enough to have had that opportunity. We had 186 kids in our class. Well, now they're pushing, most classes are over 200, if not the 210, 220 range. So if you were just to average that, that's roughly 20 students more per class, so 12 grades, it's 240 more students. And that's, you know, and you get class sizes like that, that's also an extra teacher per grade as well. So that, all of these things are, have an impact on our schools. And I think, again, I am all for this bond, this issue. So go out and vote for that issue as well. Because we need the classroom space. Like, I know specifically, that's just one school district. I know that Pella Christian, they did a renovation and an addition several years ago on their grade school to help also accommodate four of these. But yes, I do think that is a big thing to keep aware as we do get more housing, that we need to think about our schools and all of those different facets as well.
Next question, anyone? Kalina, do we have one online?
That's it.
So I say we are live streaming, there's about 20 people online. We are having some technical detail difficulties there. So for those online, do apologize there.
John Dinoi. We have heard a lot through the three forums regarding affordable housing. I do not know how a councilperson can cheapen land, can cheapen product. So why are we wasting time as a councilperson as an idea of affordable housing? Through my senior high school of education, as all the further I made it, fortunate, I'm thinking we have an airport issue on the table. A few years back, that estimate was $40 million. That was before the cost of material has increased. If we at Prairie Ridge have experienced cost increase from $200,000 for a home to 270, 300, what has the cost of the new airport gone to? I believe it could be possibly in the neighborhood of $60 million. Of that, the federal government will fund 90%. Leaves $6 million for the city of Pella. I believe if you drive from the proposed site of the airport from Pella and now drive from Pella to Knoxville, we are too proud to join Knoxville. So if Pella has to do $10 million, I mean, $6 million for 10% share, I will start a business and provide transportation
Get to the question quickly.
From Pella to Knoxville. And now we've solved an affordable housing issue because now we've loosened up the present Pella airport. Now, this is where council can get involved and give lots to people to begin affordable housing as a gift of land. Thank you.
Can I answer that first?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoi, if that day comes, I'm going to come knocking on your door because I'm going to need some support.
Do it.
I, the airport is such a hot issue. And the way, you know, I know this isn't always the popular answer. I'm very neutral. I do not, I could argue either side of that debate. But I will tell you that the cost has not gone up quite the percentage in the construction that you think. I think Prairie Ridge has gone up. It is not costing that kind of increase to build a house. I do it every day, I know it's true. But if that opportunity came to put affordable housing there, I think I would turn the first shovel of dirt because that is a great opportunity. I won't go on my whole thing about putting too much low-income housing together and the problems that can cause. But I would sure like to see us have affordable housing at 175 to 225. And it can be, then I do it every day. So anybody who tells you it can't be, don't listen to them. As far as the airport, I don't know. I would come into this, I don't foresee the city council ever voting on the airport issue again. It's in court, they're fighting over it on the state level. I don't foresee this council making that decision again. I don't know if I'm going in the right direction.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll take it then. One of the definitions of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting the same result. And when I look at affordable housing, we have got to get creative. It isn't working this way. We have got to look at different, unique opportunities. I dig your idea. I love the idea of gifting people land to build a house on. I love the idea of taking chip financing that's already held in reserve and allowing urban pioneers to come into our community or urban pioneers to move out of an apartment and buy an older home and fix it up and be given a grant for that. This is going to be, this is going to take some creativity. It is going to take people saying, you know what? What we're doing right now isn't working. So let's, why not try something different? And as for the airport issue, we've been at this since 2002. So like Robin, it is so tied up right now in litigation. I think that we need to look at the second part of your question, which is, how do we move forward? What will happen? And how do we continue to look at things in a creative nature to allow people to live here?
So, I'm not sure which one is I want to tackle first. So John is right on the distance he cited from the airport to Knoxville and airport to Pella. But I think one thing that's important is, aside from your perspective on the airport, I think what's important to realize is why it's being proposed where it is. And when we talk about bigger picture for our community, there were lots and lots of meetings, Mark sat in every one, I'm guessing, about how do we partner with Oskaloosa and Knoxville? And how do we, more importantly, how do we get a road to I-80 to get better industry access to the interstate? And someone who swings a lot bigger bat than the city of Pella that lives in Oskaloosa was able to make that happen in Washington, that forced us to put the airport where it's proposed so that we can get a road to Interstate 8. Now, that's not happened yet, right? We're still waiting on the road. But just to give you a little background on why that location versus where the old radio station was. As far as whether we'll talk about that, who knows? You know, the litigation that's going on, Mahask County Board of Supervisors is going to do everything they can to make sure that never progresses any further than it is today. So whether we'll vote on it as the next council or not, I don't know. I still believe it's the right thing to do for the safety of our community, for the people that come here, that support our industries. So that's my bid on the airport, John. As far as the affordable housing piece, if we really want to drive affordable housing and there's big business that wants to buy a property for $11,000 bucks an acre, then they should sell it for $11,000 bucks an acre and really drive allowing people to build a house that they can afford to live in. Yeah, I think the biggest thing about why are we talking about affordable housing is because people need roofs over their head. I mean, it's a kind of a crazy concept, I know. But I think as we, as we, sorry, I didn't expect it to laugh. No, I was joking. But I think as, that, we need people for workforce. And if we're not getting people, I had shared this at one of the previous forums, and then I had heard this, that the percentage, and I can't remember it off the top of my head, of people who, when they look for a job, so say we have somebody coming in for Pellcarp, Vermeer, Layley, you name it, if they start in Knoxville, their likelihood of coming to Pella later is actually less, like, they're less likely to come to Pella later because they will put down roots, they will put down in other communities. And if we want to see them here and join our community, we need places for them to live in affordable ways. And like I said, I love to see everyone wants to own a house. Everyone wants their own two pick, uh, sorry, two kid with a picket fence house. And, but what does it look like, again, to have more apartment-style living? And I think, again, there are many options. And I do not think that there is a one-size-fits-all. And I think also, kind of what Tony was just saying, like, I think to get affordable housing means that people have to sacrifice all over the board, whether that's the landowners, whether that's the construction people. That's the only way. And so I think there are many different options. And again, there's not one-size-fits-all for the affordable housing. And I, again, the airport, I'm not sure that we will actually ever address that, so.
I'll start with airport. I can add a couple things to what Tony said, he was pretty much right on. First of all, regarding Knoxville, the original effort was a three-party regional airport, and Knoxville elected to withdraw. Had they remained in it, the airport, proposed airport would be somewhere in the city of Lytton rather than where it's at right now. And, oh, as far as the delays, that's a strategy. There has been one frivolous lawsuit after another. If you drag it out long enough, maybe everybody will go away, is the thinking there. And all I can say there is, good folks in Mahask County like to pay attorney fees, apparently, because they have paid a lot of them. As far as affordable housing, I still don't know what that exactly is. A point was just recently made here. Most of us think of housing as being that single-family home on a lot. And that concept is changing. Today's young people are not so much into that. They're a little more inclined to go the apartment route, as Alan said, or the condo route. The more urban setting, the more pedestrian-friendly setting. I think that has to be part of the mix. I'm going to be real curious to see that huge rental complex that was built out here by Alvin Ford. That fascinates and scares me. I'm going to be very interested to see whether that answers any affordable questions or any housing questions, period.
I would like to clarify just a couple of things, John. If it is, and I haven't had any projection, I know concrete is going up, but if it is to $60 million, the federal government pays 90% of that $6 million. That would be split between the city of Oskaloosa and the city of Pella. If we sold the airport as well, if a developer wanted to come in, all those funds are designated and have to go toward that replacement airport. So I'm not sure that you really gave a fair view of what it would cost the citizens to go on. If it doesn't happen, we are concerned about our large corporate partners. I live real close to the airport, and about every morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, all these corporate jets fly out. They go do their business. And about 6 o'clock at night, they all want to come home and spend time with their families. That's the way large corporations do business. They're the life breath of our community. That is the, in my mind, the duty of a city. That's infrastructure that we need. And it is a safety thing. You talk to anybody that lands at our airport, and it's a safety thing. It would only take one incident, and those jets could not fly out of our airport. I know this isn't a popular thing, but I am still convicted that we need the airport. The federal government wants it, the state wants it, communities wants it. There's some folks in Oskaloosa that, Board of Supervisors, that have put on the brakes. But I do think that we will prevail.
Any questions, or you guys should go to the microphone.
I think we both have questions that really like to ask.
Well, I'm going to vote, and I believe in being financially responsible. And Los Llanos is a perfect example of where it has not paid off. The housing went great. The housing went great, and the golf course didn't fly. Nobody can make any money. It was turned back over to the city, we now own it. We have to pay to keep it up, which I think comes to around a million dollars a year, which cannot go for infrastructure improvements in our city. And I think this past year, you just put in the budget 500,000 to improve the greens out there. For how many people? The people that live on it don't pay association dues? I've never heard of anybody living on a golf course where they don't pay association dues. So my question is, how many more of these big things that are gonna cost money, maybe they'll succeed, maybe they won't, but if they don't, we have to borrow to pay for them and build them? How do you feel about that?
Mark, you wanna start?
Sure. Let's start. I don't quite agree with you numbers on Boss Landon. It was poorly managed for a number of years. The city has always owned the golf course, but it is doing quite well lately, as it has been steadily improved. I will never understand why there was not an association associated with that development. I don't know that, that blows me away how that ever happened.
Why are my figures wrong?
Insofar as investment out there, I'm not, I'm not aware of a million dollars in the budget. There's a lot of work to do out there because there's been a lot of deferred maintenance.
I'm just talking about fertilizer, mowing, that kind of stuff. I call it our Pella Golf Course, and what it costs to keep that going, and that's only nine holes. So I just doubled the figure.
Oh, I don't think it's quite that high, but we have to check into that.
Besides, that, they get free water.
Not free, but a whole lot cheaper. For those who aren't aware, but the Boss Landon Golf Course is able to pull raw water off the lines before it goes to the city treatment plant, whereas the Pella Golf and Country Club is on the other end of the line. So they, they pay considerably more. But as to future projects, yeah, we gotta keep moving. We can't just sit still, there's no standing still. And, you know, everything-
But don't move on into your video.
Everything has to be given thorough examination, absolutely. Concepts have to be carefully thought out, citizen input. The water park would not be what it is today if it wasn't for citizen input. And the citizens said, no, it's not good enough. We need a lazy river. We need a plunge line. That would have never happened without citizen input. So it can, it can go both ways, but I support it, we have to keep moving forward.
It's, that golf course has been a real quagmire and a real brrr in the councils. It's been a brrr. We have gone many, many closed sessions on how to deal with that. I, and I think there was an attempt made to try and initiate fees for people that live on the course. That did not go very far. I have not heard of a golfing community that does not have those fees to support it. That was not set up appropriate. That was a huge strike against that golf course. So I guess we as council, as long as we've been battling this, and I think we just formed our seventh management group. What's the alternative? It's not a good situation now, but what's the alternative? I mean, is the alternative to close it down and let it grow over with weeds? You know, that would really put a detriment on property values, and property values is tax revenue. So I, I don't disagree with you, Dodi. It's just a kind of a sticky wicket, and-
It's an expensive one.
Yes, it's very expensive, and I think that's something that hopefully we can learn from in the future.
Mrs. Boat, I know so little about Boss Landon Golf Course, but I do know we live on this golf course in downtown, and I love it, and we don't pay extra for it, and it's like a bonus to us. You know, I was at a city council meeting, and they were talking about the clubhouse, which has always fascinated me, that we have this building there that just seems to flounder. And the council, as I was sitting in your seat, just observing, talked about putting enough money in and not taking it down. There were some repairs that had to be done, and they wanted to do that minimum repair to keep it down. I will always say, with the right person in charge out there, it could be something special. And I don't know if that's the, I, as a taxpayer, I say it's not the city's problem, but I don't know either who would do it. I know I tried to use that facility when it was run by one of those management companies, and it was awful. In fact, I went home and said, I need to go manage that place because it's run so bad. So I, I'm with you, and I don't think, and that's why this growth that we talk about is so important, that we don't get project after project after project as our responsibility because someone made it. And when I lived in Oskaloosa, one of the leaders in Oskaloosa said to me once, Robin, I just have to start a project, because if I start it, the city will have to finish it. And I've always thought that was very important leadership, because the city shouldn't always have to meet that need.
Dodi, I don't disagree with you, but one of the, the shining stars in something like this is, as we look at growth, we have to learn from issues like this. We had a broken water main in the clubhouse, and that was part of, that was a real difficult time, you know, to determine what are we gonna do, how are we gonna do it? Thank goodness we're insurance companies, and, and we didn't get a hold of it. But there again, I think you're absolutely correct. You know, we do have this project out there, the housing in the golf course, and at one time, it was thought to be the end, end all be all. And now all it is, it is a beautiful place for people to live, but we also have taken on quite a bit of city money to keep it going. And if we don't learn from it, then it was all for nothing. So we do have to be cautious going forward with projects. We have to look at what we do wrong. I know I keep talking about systemic effects, but we do, we have to learn from this. I don't golf, you know, I probably wouldn't be very good at it if, if I were a golfer, but I do know that when I go by, people are really having a good time out there. One of my dear friends that's in the audience is a golfer. So I do wanna have amenities for people, but again, we have to learn how to manage it, how to manage them, and learn from our mistakes.
I agree with you also, Dodi. I've often said when I was on the council before, not sure how many of these gifts we can afford, because we've got a lot of them. And, and that's one of the things that's concerned me about some of the other projects that are being proposed. I'm not against the project and concept, but it's more than just building it, is you gotta, you gotta put staff in it, and, and you gotta take care of it. And, you know, over the years, I was part of a group, I don't know what number or manager it was, probably four or five, but we did go door to door, probably three streets, and then decided to go home, because after you ask a couple people about homeowners association, and they cuss at you, you just decide it's time to go home. And so, so I agree, I, I think, I think it's necessary out there because it's not gonna get cheaper, but I also do think that, that we have a responsibility, that we own that facility, and so we do need to take care of it. And we just have to learn from it, that, you know, there's more to the cost of a project than just building it. There's something to do with, with maintaining it, keeping it viable. And so I hope that we learned something from that, I'm not sure we have, because these projects keep coming up, that how great it will be, and then we'll just turn it over to you as, as the city, and you guys take care of it. So I think those are the kind of conversations that we need to have with the public when we're talking about building a project, not, not necessarily the cost of building, but are we all together, hand in hand, in how we're going to support it, and how we're going to fund it long term? Because the last thing you wanna do is build a big place, and then if it doesn't succeed because you can't get people to work in it, and you have to close your pool a month early because you can't get people to work in it, those aren't projects that are viable for the community.
Yeah, I think I would sit with Robin on this. I have apparently a lot to learn about Boss Landon. I, I didn't, didn't realize some of that was going on, but I, I do wanna look into that for you, Dodi, as far as, I, I don't know what some of those numbers look like. But again, to me, it's, it's learning as we go forward, we, we need to learn from quote, unquote, mistakes that have been made, and to prevent ourselves from going down the same rabbit hole twice. But I think also, I think of any good sports team, business, city choir, band, whatever it is, they, they get to where they're at by taking risks, and I'll emphasize that with a word previous, or that goes before that, but it's smart risk. You, teams, they like, let's use football as an example, they study film, they, they do their research on the other teams that they, they play against. And, and I think, but then they have to, you don't win a game by watching the most game film, though, because at some point you also have to play the game. And so to me, it's, it's again, we have to, we have to learn from these things, but still be willing to make, to, sorry, to take smart risks as we, as we continue to progress, or, or, or we'll just stay stagnant and nowhere, and I don't think anyone wants to stay stagnant, because if we're not moving forward, we're moving backwards. And if we're not moving backwards, we're at least getting passed up. And so, and I don't know about you, but most of our schools and, and sports teams and choirs, we don't, we don't like to lose, so I don't wanna see us getting passed up by, by a lot of the, the things that are, by other cities that, when we can actually do something about it.
You've got a question? You've got yours? Okay. Go to the microphone. We've also got a lot of people.
Is it on?
No.
There. This has been such an interesting and educational evening, and it's something that I would love that, that the city did all the time, that it wasn't just when candidates are running. But if each of you mentioned how important it would be to hear from you, we want to listen, of course, we would want your feedback or input, but I don't feel that we are often able to do that. Council meetings are, of course, the law and extremely important, and have to be handled in a certain very formal way, but they don't succeed in real communication with, with the public, between the public and the council. So I wonder what you would support that would, or what you could create, or ideas you could come up with, that would improve communication within the city? There are too many rumors, there are things I learned tonight I didn't know, and I, I thought I was pretty close to the ground. Would you consider things like a monthly open forum? And it could be topic driven, so that you didn't have to just go all over the place, but we're thinking about doing this, not working so much with consultants, where some people are invited and some aren't, but an open forum and a free and easy exchange between whoever's up there and, and the public. So what are your ideas for improving communication? What would you really set up and make the council responsible for carrying through for us? Thank you.
So you stole one of my ideas, Robin. But I, I do think that, you know, the, the number one thing that causes myths and rumors and lies in this town are secrets. And, boy, there's been a lot of them. And so I think that a monthly communication, I think that's an awesome idea. When I served under Mayor Dobinecker, we used to meet with the departments in small groups, and it was a perfect way for us to learn what was really happening within the, the city departments, that I could then share with people when they asked me in the grocery store, because that's where a lot of these conversations happen. But I do believe that monthly communications, maybe not with the whole council, but a couple members, and you rotate those in and out. I think the newsletter's been a great addition to that process, but I'm not sure everybody reads it, quite honestly. So I would totally support that. You know, we've tried the coffee time things, and, and some of those worked for a little while, and then they kind of fizz out, but I love the idea of a dedicated topic, and that way you can come prepared, right? We can come with information that we can share for you versus listening to you, then saying, well, I have to get back to you, because I don't know. And, but I think we need to get back to meeting with our, our departments so that we can be knowledgeable, because it's amazing to me the things that you learn from the public when you're on the council, and you wonder why you didn't know that first. And so I, I don't think the secrets are just from the council to the community. So that communication needs to be opened up from the building right next door, all the way to the folks that serve on the council, and then we can share that. If, if there's been any good thing that's come from the, the bad thing at the swimming pool, is it's gotten people to come to council meetings. And I hated that that's what it took to get that done, but it's, it's made people open their eyes, open their ears, wanna get involved, and that's a great thing. That's, that's the kind of activity that's going to grow our community, getting more people involved.
Not, we don't get enough notice about what's on the agenda, and you don't know, for example, that there's going, that important issue's going to come up that evening. So I don't know if that could be handled differently, too. Agendas don't come out until Friday, and council meets Tuesday.
Yep. You can answer.
Thank you for the question. I, you know, that is something that I am also looking at, because that's half the reason I'm running, is I, I wanted to get involved, and I wanted to get informed, and I think one of the, the things that I do hear the most is, especially talking to, to people my age, or really of all ages, that people, people aren't aware of what is, is going on. And so I've had some fantastic conversations. You know, I think, I think the, the reality is, is I, I would assume that most of the council members would love to sit down with people, if you email, if you reach out to them. I guess I've never tried that, but, but I, like, for me, I would love to sit down with people. I love the one-on-one. This is not my jam, I don't know, I, I would love, I love more the, the personal, the conversations and stuff like that, but I do, I do even like the idea of the, the monthly, hey, what's going on in, in our community? You know, I, the one, one of the blessings, though, is I've also, as I've been preparing for this, is I've gone back through a lot of the, the meetings online. There's always links afterwards that you can get informed as well, they, they're on YouTube, the minutes are always posted. So I, I know, I know that's only part of the question, but I, I would love to, to hear more ideas as well as to how to get people informed, because the reality is, is social media is great, and a lot of people don't actually click on stuff to actually get informed about things. So that, that to me is not a, a great, all encompassing way, and it's usually the first, the first idea, so.
I love this question. I really believe that when elected, we're here for you. And if our approach to city government isn't more of a dirt between the toes type of approach, then shame on us. This was a subject that my husband and I took very seriously, and that was talking to people. And so one of the first things that my husband did after I was elected is he put a table and chairs in front of our business. And I let people in Ward one know, hey, come on down. Well, they came. And then he had to get, go from a table to two, to a table to four, and then to a table for six, and now we have a harvest table. Those conversations became so popular, that I don't know if you're aware of this, and maybe you are, but Blue Cross Blue Shield did an ad with Nick and I. And it ended up in a coffee time. You know, if we can't sit down and talk to you, if we can't understand what your issues are and give you a call and say, hey, Robin, Big Rock Park is on the agenda, then don't vote for us because we're not doing our job. You're our bosses. We need to know your, we need to know your issues. My favorite thing to do, one of the favorite, is going to the manor. I go there a lot. I find out what's going on there. And man, do they nail me at times. And you know what? I deserve it. Because I haven't been there in two months. Communication, and it doesn't have to be complicated. It's as easy as sitting around a table and having your husband bring a Mountain Dew out. And say, you want Mountain Dew or water?
Thank you so much for this question. I'm here because of a coffee time I had with these two once upon a time. So.
Mountain Dew or water?
Water for me. I served on planning and zoning for, I think I'm close to seven years. And I've had this discussion at least three times a year for probably all of those seven years. And it's fair, I'll tell you today, I'm as confused, maybe more so than I was seven years ago. Because when I was appointed, I said, this is so great. I get to represent the people. And then I was told, Robin, you can't talk to the people. Anything that you say with a conversation has to come here in a public forum. Well, I'm not afraid of anything we say. But I really say, okay, now I've got to go through Monday's call and Tuesday's call. And I ran into so-and-so at the grocery store. And I've struggled with that for all seven of those years. Little note that I talked to her about that after we had a presentation by the city attorney about why we weren't supposed to have those discussions. So I will tell you, that's a hot topic for me. Because I believe anyone who sits in this seat isn't here to do our own opinion. We're here to say, the bulk of the people are telling me that this is what they want or don't want. And I found myself in a very hot seat, one of the very first meetings I served when I was so adherent to anything. And people started saying, we don't want that Casey's Grocery Store, or Casey's Gas Station and Grocery Store. And I stood up there, I vote no. I vote no. You know, me personally, I'm on the other end of Main Street. But that's what my responsibility is, to represent the people. So I agree that we need a forum on a regular basis. We need to have discussions like this where you say, I don't like that gas station in my backyard. Don't let it come. So at least we know. So thank you for asking that. It's repetitive, I do it every time.
One question, Robin. How much time would you like to see for the agenda before it comes out?
The agenda of city council? Oh, well.
I mean, usually it's out on a Friday. And I'm not proposing anything, but I'm just asking feedback. What would you say would be a reasonable amount of time?
A week.
A week? Whoa!
I mean, you can always add to the agenda, but, I mean, if, for example...
No, you can't add to the agenda. Once the agenda is out and posted, then that by law, we need to follow.
So you can't amend or change the agenda at the city council?
Once it's posted. So I'm just, you know, we have rules that we have to stay within. But we do have a little flexibility, but a week would really be pushing. But you do bring up a great issue. This is, we're here to serve you, folks. I went back, I had served two years under Ted Zosta, and Darrell Dobinecker got in. I always thought Darrell Dobinecker was a phenomenal community. He's the one that implemented the leadership letter. He also, for about two years, and he had a way, he didn't say it was mandatory, but he had a way of really obligating you. And we met in the library in that public room there once a month. And council, he wanted at least two or three council members there, and he attended everyone. That was a great time to communicate, great time to get feedback. I'd love to see something like that happen again. Did it get cumbersome after a while, another night out? Yeah, but if you're not willing to pay the price, then you don't deserve to be a representative of the community. Okay, thanks for the question.
Yeah, to share with the folks here, I would definitely be open to formats for better communication. The very first meet-the-candidate occasion in this cycle was a very casual thing up at the Butcher's Brew House. People came, sat down at tables, and the various candidates just circled around and would sit down and say, what's on your mind? It was a great time. It really was. So that would be a lovely format to be able to repeat periodically.
I think we got everybody on that question right? We got one question here, and then you're next.
Thank you, guys, for running. I don't think I said that last time. It takes cojones. It's a lovely sign up there. I happen to know a fellow that made that. The second bullet point, to maintain law and order. Order, okay? Law, yeah, the laws are easy. The cops enforce the laws. Thanks for being here, I'm behaving. It's up to you guys to make sure we keep the order, the whole pool thing. So anyway, I'll keep it short. I think it was 2002, the first time I heard the phrase, affordable housing. Pella needs affordable housing. And I've asked a question, and I'm asking it again tonight, and it's a really simple question. What is the number? What is the number? And if somebody says that $275,000 for the new thing out here is the number, I guarantee you, the girls that work down in my wife's store can't afford that. So what is the number for affordable housing? Is affordable for everybody? Or affordable for mid-level managers at the rollscreener at the Verrierde, or the PPI, or the Layley?
Call me, call me. Here, here it is.
I was calling on everybody as I was told. And I didn't attack anybody either. That was pretty good. Thank you for hosting this, by the way. Robin?
I know.
And then everybody else.
I'm going to tell you what I think of affordable housing is. I think $175,000 to $200,000 is still affordable, especially at low interest rates. But I'm going to tell you, there are ways to help with that. I'm going to, there is money that comes through the state, well, through the federal government, through the state. Habitat uses it as $35,000 for each applicant. We wrote the grant so that if that applicant stays in a house 10 years, they never pay a dime. That's $35,000 off the top.
Can I do that now?
Yes, the thing is, you can. If you're income qualifying, which is up to 60, well, actually up to 80% of the median income. And for a family of four, it's 74 or 75, so yes, you would. But the thing is, that money is available. And I called, so I'm like, I'm telling every banker in Pella, they can do this, and this will be incentive. And so I started calling bankers. And they said, well, Robin, applying for the money is a lot of work. Yeah, it's a lot of work for me, too. Doing paperwork to get the person qualified is a lot of work. Yeah, it's a lot of work for me, too. But I'll tell you, when I say to those families, stay in this house for 10 years because it's worth $35,000 off the top, I mean that. And if they say they're selling it eight years, I say, remember, it's worth that extra 24 months. There are things like that out there. We just have to get the right people engaged. So you take that $175,000 or $200,000, and you take 10, 20, 35,000 off the top, that makes it even more affordable. Those programs are out there.
So do it!
One of the great things about being the executive director of a nonprofit is you don't have a lot of money sometimes to run your organization. And this is where Robin and I unite. I have been at the executive director of four organizations. And you get creative. You really do. Now, unlike Robin, I would like to see affordable housing between 100 and 175. But we have to get creative. It occurs to me that every year, we knock down these old houses. They're annihilated, and then we build these expensive houses. Well, what would happen if the city invested in raw dirt? These houses that are being annihilated are usually given away for free. Am I right?
I want to kiss you right now.
Well, don't. Okay. Is this taking from my time, this roughness? Okay. When I say to you, we have to be creative, we have to be creative, there is a way. So the city would invest in raw dirt, lots of raw dirt in Ward 1. We take these houses before they are demolished. We don't even put them on a full basement if it isn't doable. We can even put them on a slab. We get creative. And I believe, and then we can take tip funding, and I keep saying this until this happens, I'm going to keep saying it. We put it into a grant process, and we give these families an opportunity to fix up a house, a historic house, and build equity. And another thing we're building are neighborhoods, which is what will sustain our community.
So, you know, Lynn hit on a couple of topics I was going to mention. Because part of the Osposo Street corridor project was, how do we create unique, small neighborhoods within the corridor? Because there are some very cool houses in that neighborhood. We hear a lot about young adults that want to get into a house. And Spot has said this many times at other forums where he bought a house and he put sweat equity into it. And there are opportunities for that. And then there are grants available to assist in that project. So I think as part of what we've talked about on the corridor project, there are many, many opportunities for that. So we have to make that happen. As far as what is affordable housing? You know, the first house I bought on P Street, when I bought my first house, was $80,000. That's all I could afford. So for me, affordable housing was $80,000 when I bought my first house. I think today, you know, it'd be really hard to find something. But I think anything over $125,000 starts to get out of reach for people. And I said it earlier tonight. If the community, or the city, or big business in this town really want to invest and do things and not make a profit on it, then sell that dirt for the same money you bought it for. Because that's how you promote young people getting into homes. Buying property for a certain dollar amount and then selling it for an exorbitant amount of money for a quarter of an acre isn't how you create affordable housing neighborhoods. It's not how you do it. So I hope I've answered your question, Dan. But to me, those are the things that are important. You know, we've talked about affordable housing so often that sometimes I get confused on what my answer should be. Because there isn't necessarily a checkbox that really identifies what that number should be. Because it's different for everybody. But at the end of the day, as a community, we need to create those opportunities for people to get into homes, put some sweat equity into it, get the grant money that's out there available. And they will create a neighborhood that they want to live in, and homes are proud of us.
As much as I would love to say $100,000, I don't think that's a reality. I do construction stuff on the side, and I know what it costs to renovate houses. I know what it costs to build houses. And that price is not going down. Again, land costs money. I'm all for buying up land and trying to get it sold at a low cost. But a lot of the land around here is not affordable, even for most people to then be able to build a house on top of that. I don't know what I would consider to be, I know that's not a great answer for you, Spot.
No, it's not.
But, hey, I, you know, I, again, I would love to say it's $100,000. But I also know that even with all the grant money in the world, that's really hard to do. And so, but I'm all for trying to get incentives, trying to get people to, again, I said it earlier. We have to, in order to get really, truly affordable housing, you have to see people all over that are making sacrifices, whether that's the landowners, whether that's the construction companies, whatever it is. And, but that's also, again, not easy for people when that's their livelihoods, when that's their, the things that they've invested in for so long, too. So I know that probably doesn't answer your question 100%, but I think that's a very, very loaded question that oftentimes, not everything gets addressed in that as well.
No, it was a pretty simple question.
With a very simple answer, we'll go that way. Go for it.
I appreciate, everybody's trying to answer the question of what is affordable housing? Because I don't know. I really don't. I do know one thing. You know, you can talk about the land. It is expensive around here. Then you've got the infrastructure. And that's what really jacks up the price of a lot. That's part of the reason why lots have gotten smaller and smaller and smaller is they divide up an acre of land to try to spread that cost. And I'll share the concern about infill housing. That is, houses that are deteriorating within the original community itself, that's a real problem for me. You have your developments like Fountain Hills and Prairie Ridge, and that's wonderful. But we don't want to watch the homes that we have within Old Pella, December 8th, fall apart and go downhill. That would be a tragedy.
I remember your question from the previous one, Spot. But I think affordable housing is a moving target, depending upon where you are. I think there is two ways. If we truly want affordable housing, and I think that currently, right now, that I know Marion County has stepped up to the plate and is handling a lot of the infrastructure and the development. And construction costs have gone up. I'm in it. Construction costs are on the way down. They're going down. Lumber's probably down 45% to 50% since February. Electrical equipment is moderate. I haven't seen the prices of those houses go down at all. So, and one other way, I think that, I think we, you can raise the other side of it also. Affordable, I think we need to really step up to the plate as employers and make wages that they can afford houses. It's a two-pronged approach. You can't rob Peter to pay Paul.
Well, I hired Last Winter buying a house.
What's that?
Well, I hired Last Winter is purchasing a house.
That says something.
And I am not premier rollscreener, laylay, or PPI.
That says something, Spot.
Well, there you go. Thank you for the answer, everybody.
All right. We're now to the portion where we're going to give you an opportunity for a closing statement. So we will, hopefully, everybody's able to stay a little bit longer, too. You know, people can mingle and ask questions personally. But this will kind of close up the formal part of this. And Alan, I think we're going to start with you. We'll give you 90 seconds. I think we have time for 90 seconds for HBO on a closing statement.
Man, that's loaded. I think for me, you know, I've thought hard about this. And I keep hearing, as well, one of the biggest things is, why did I get involved in politics? And I keep telling people, I didn't get involved in politics. I'm trying to get involved in our local government. I don't like to play political games. I don't like when I look out at our nation and we're just so divided because of politics. And so to me, our city council should be a place of unity, and it should be a place of doing what is best for our city. And so for me, you know, I heard this quote, and I think I've used it here, or not here before, but...
but a politician's only looking forward to the next election. And what I'm looking forward to is actually the next generation, or the next two generations. And, and to me, I wanna see us get to that point and learn from our past, learn from mistakes we've made, but also just pushing, pushing forward to, to be the best that Pella can be. And, and again, I, I don't wanna sit here and play games, because I also heard this, forgive my French, but you, you play stupid games, and you win stupid prizes. And I'm not about to, to play stupid games with our, with our city, the city that I love and that I was born and raised in. So I am who I am, and that's what you're gonna get. And so that, if that's reason enough, please go vote for me. But please go vote, in general, and vote in form.
So, you know, as I think about, you know, the question at the top of the night was, what do you do in your first 90 days? And we've talked about a lot of things here tonight. But for me, the, the first and foremost is, we have to get back to listening. We have to be, get, get back to being a council that listens, not a council that talks. And so that, that's the number one priority in the first 90 days, is, let's get back to listening. Let's figure out what those channels look like. We need to start really getting our hands around projects that are meaningful to everyone in this community. We have to get our hands around that. We have to understand where infrastructure sits, and growth sits, and, and amenities sit. Because they're all three important, but they can't all be the most important thing. So we have to understand that. And then we have to get back to being proud of who we are. Over the last two months, I, I have been blown away at the amount of people that, that have either said, do, do you not love where you live? Are you not proud of Pella? And that couldn't be further from the... I am very proud of this community. And so because of that, protecting our uniqueness and, and being proud that we're a town of 10,000 people, that's okay. We have great industry here, and we need to work hard to keep them. We have great amenities in schools, and churches, and fund facilities, and all those kind of things. That's why people wanna come here. That's why they're retiring here. So we have to get back to listening. We have to be fiscally smart about our projects. And we have to be proud of being Pella. And so if you vote for me, I would greatly appreciate that. And those are the things that are gonna be, first and foremost, for me in the first 90 days.
Oh, really good. Here's a question for you. What would possess a woman to spend $1,238.58 of her own money? On something that she didn't even know if she could win. I think it's called love. I love being a city councilwoman. I love representing you. I love it so much that I've put my own money into this. And that was money that was earned selling one carnation at a time. I love sitting around the table with you and talking. I love the fact that my husband encourages it. I agree with Tony. We have to talk. We have to listen. And we have to move forward together as a community. We can't be divisive. But we have to understand what you're saying before we can move forward with the projects that are important to you. And make no doubt about it, the projects that are important to you are the ones we need to have. Well, this is the last night we're gonna do this, and I think this is time four or five that we've had the opportunity to talk to you. Though not Pella-born, I Pella-love. And I spent last weekend in Minnesota, and I, my, I told my friend, we were in a similar town in Minnesota, and I said, but ours is best. So it's been an honor to come and address these issues with you. And to be honest with you, there is not one bad person up here. We all don't agree on the same way to get to the end, but we all believe that in the end, we want the best for Pella. And so I, you know, I couldn't say, don't vote for, don't vote for Tony, because he just, he's really a good guy. And I'm very honored to be in the same race. So thank you for letting me have this opportunity. Thank you for making Pella how fantastic it is and that I, a foreigner in this land, have now adopted as my own, and I'm so proud to be from here. Thank you.
20 years, that's when I got invested in this community. I have not taken it lightly. For the most part, I have very much enjoyed it. Not everything about it. But for the most part, I think as a council, we could always come together and have a united council and move this community forward. I think I've always tried to serve as our founding fathers, with a servant's heart. I wanna listen, I wanna hear what you have to say. If you call me, I will talk with you. If you wanna meet, I will meet with you. I'm not always so great at email. I keep fat fingering everything. I try and respond to all emails. But I certainly hope that we can unite and go forward, and that we hold your best entrance, interest in mind. Thanks.
I'm gonna pass on the speech. Instead, do a bit of a tutorial. Defend the record, you might say. There's been a lot of cheap shots thrown at, we're not keeping up with the infrastructure. And I have some numbers straight out of the budget book. Public record, as you can probably find a copy at the library. But we do something unique here in Pella. For the general fund, we do a three-year rolling budget. There's very, very few communities our size that do that. This year's budget is very specific, a lot of hard work. And then the next two years is very serious estimates of, of revenue and expenses. The capital facilities budget, which is everything from snowplows to streets, is a five-year rolling budget. And I'll just throw a few numbers out to you. Including this year for the next four years, in the capital facilities budget for electric is $6 million of improvements. Waste water, $1.4 million. Water, $1.75 million. Public works, which is a big one, overall is $8.6 million. To be, break it down more specifically, red, streets, first, first of all, residential streets, $900,000. That's mostly asphalt overlay. And your arterial streets, $7.5 million. An example of how quick the money goes away, out in Tony's neighborhood, Neil Drive had just recently been rebuilt to absorb the traffic. That's a $1.75 million project. Your city, 2122, has an operating budget at $41 million. There will be a surplus of $1.4 million if everything goes according to plan. So I, I just wanted to defend the record and defend the work that those of us that have been on the council have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight and helping us get to know you. And thank you, everyone, for coming as well.
I wanna thank everybody here, and the people here. This has been the nicest forum I've ever been at. Everybody's been civil. You haven't had any tantrums, any raised voices. It's been lovely. And I thank everybody, particularly Nina, and John, and Eric, and Michelle, and everybody who organized this. This has been just outstanding. And we're all neighbors, and it's nice to see you. Okay, thank you.